You know, one day I pulled out a jackhammer. Where did that come from? I don't know.
Get to work on it.
That's exactly right. But it's great to be with you again.
You too.
I hope you had a great weekend. I hope everyone at home did as well. A very good Monday afternoon, Betsy, to you and everyone watching at home. Tonight, city council will decide whether or not the city will step in to save the historic Shaker Square after the property went into foreclosure at the beginning of the pandemic.
Brandon Simmons spoke to council members about the importance of that area in our community. Andy joins us now with details about the $12 million loan the city would be putting forward. Brandon, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, definitely a lot of money, but people say it's very important on the east side. Shaker Square, obviously, a historic area that many people know and recognize. And a lot of people say that supporting that area and its success really is vital for keeping that whole neighborhood alive in that area. Now, for more than a year, the property has been in a court-ordered receivership as the current owners were being sued by lenders sending the property into foreclosure. Now, deals to buy the property by others have fallen through. And for months, there's been a plan to have neighborhood development corporations take over management of the property until a long-term owner can be found. But to do that, the city of Cleveland would have to act as a bank, essentially putting up a $12 million loan. That money would be used to pay off the current debt and provide money to make much of the improvements that are needed at the property. But without the city putting forward that money, the property really would be in limbo. People don't know what would happen to it. The lenders would have a final say in that. And there are a lot of residents, a lot of council members right now who are saying it's important for the city to take this step so that we have a future that is much more certain than that.
Okay, so $12 million would be that money that the city would put forward for this. I'm sure there's been some opposition to that plan, too. What has been keeping this from going forward?
Well, there are a couple of different arguments. I know, first off, there's one tenant there who owns Edwin's. He said that the city is grossly overpaying. He said that that $12 million amount is just too much. He said they should be paying closer to $6 million. In fact, he actually tried to buy the property, but that didn't work out at that price. The lenders just simply weren't having it. Also, another argument, we have an incoming council member who was new to that area. Her name is Deborah Gray, and she said that the project is in her ward, and she feels like paying $12 million just to support the square without having the same focus on the surrounding neighborhood is a mistake. She said this earlier during a meeting.
I am moving forward with this deal on the contingency that the entire war floor is developed and the residents, the residents have the right and they're going to use and we demand development through the entire war floor.
Now, you heard her there. She is supporting the deal, but she's very hesitant at the same time, saying she wants to see more money put forward to help the neighborhoods that surround that area. Now, the important thing to note is that this does go to vote tonight by the entire council. That's supposed to happen at 7 o'clock. And again, we also need to point out that these are loans, so the city is supposed to recoup its money. But of course, that will take a while and of course depends on the success of this deal if it does indeed pass. That vote comes up at 7 o'clock this evening.
All right. I'm sure, Brandon, you'll continue to follow it. Brandon Simmons live tonight on What's New. Thank you. Well, the Ohio State football family is mourning the loss of former Buckeye quarterback Dwayne Haskins. We learned early Saturday that the Pittsburgh Steelers quarterback had been struck and killed in the early morning hours in South Florida. Haskins, who was just 24 years old, was crossing a major highway on foot at the time of the accident. Three News Sports Director Jim Donovan joins us now on What's New. Jim, just a few years ago, Haskins was so instrumental in leading this Buckeye team to great success on the football field. Now, everyone who knew him is just shocked at his sudden passing.
Jay, you're absolutely correct. Shockwaves around the NFL for sure. Remember, he was a high draft choice of the Washington Football Team, most recently with the Pittsburgh Steelers. But upon the news of his death and the Saturday accident down in Florida, the news has really hit Columbus, Ohio, and the campus of Ohio State and the Buckeye football family. For down at Ohio State, he was not a starter for long, just for one year. But what a year he gave them, a Big Ten championship, third in the Heisman Trophy ballot. The year before that, he came off the bench and bailed them out at Michigan when J.T. Barrett went down with injury and ended up winning the game. You might say he put the pass back in Ohio State's offense. A very emotional head football coach, Ryan Day, with the loss of Haskins to the Buckeye football family today.
You just saw somebody who you just enjoyed to be around. You know, our guys really enjoyed being around him. He uplifted others. That smile that he had was just infectious. And he kind of had an old soul about him, you know? Somebody who was young and very, very talented on the field, just had a gift for throwing the football. But sometimes when you're talking to him, you felt like you were talking to a 45 or 50-year-old man, you know, just the way he approached life in general.
Ryan Day went on to say he thinks that Haskins was a major reason and his great play out on the field why Ryan Day ended up as the head football coach at Ohio State. Now, Saturday, Ohio State will have their spring football game, and they will remember Dwayne Haskins there. And you know, Jay, I will tell you this. I was talking with a few of the Pittsburgh Steelers beat writers during the season last year and said, what are the Steelers going to do when Ben Roethlisberger retires, which of course was happening at the end of last season? And they felt that Haskins was going to be given the opportunity to compete for the starting job there with now Mitch Trubisky and of course Mason Rudolph because they felt that the Steelers had started to really find his game and help him find his game that he played so well with at Ohio State.
Yeah, just such a tragedy. I'm sure you'll have more on this story coming up on Three News at 6 o'clock. Jimmy, thanks.
You got it. Now, on your feet at 5:00, Governor Mike DeWine is in northeast Ohio tonight. He was talking up the $20 billion Intel plant that's headed to the Columbus area, and he made a stop at Lubrizol in Wickliffe. Lubrizol is already benefiting from a partnership with Intel even before the plant gets built. Lubrizol makes a special fluid that computer servers can be submerged in while they're plugged in, and that fluid absorbs the heat that the computers can generate. And that actually eliminates the needs for things like fans and other cooling devices.
Looking down on the tank and looking at the liquid, and it's quite exciting. Proximity to the Intel site clearly doesn't matter. Here we are in Lake County, 150 miles or so from Licking County, and we're seeing the effect here. The 140 companies that are currently in Ohio and in Intel's supply chain and the many others will be added to that will benefit as well as other businesses linked to those suppliers and on and on and on.
Lubrizol has already been working on that fluid for a couple of years, and we know it is expected to be used at the new Intel facility. The governor said the fluid will be manufactured at Lubrizol's plant in Painesville there in Lake County. So that is great news for all around Ohio.
Well, northeast Ohio is officially ready to play baseball. Today, the Guardians announced that their home opener, which is set for Friday, is finally officially sold out. If you still want to go, the Indians, you know the deal they do with the individual single tickets for standing room only. So you can stand out in the homerun porch out in left field and some other areas. It is fun. It's a great way to watch a baseball game. It's going to be interesting, too, because it is not only on a Friday, but a Friday night. So there are still tickets available if you want to do that standing room only. You can get them on the team's website.
Now, as far as getting to the game, if you don't want to do the whole, you know, hitch a ride Uber or Lyft thing, RTA says you can buy a $5 home opener round trip ticket with cash. The tickets are available at five of the stations that are going to be listed on your screen. And don't forget your mask. We still have to wear masks on public transportation, and that, of course, would be the to and from part of your round trip. So Brook Park, Puritus, West One, 17th, Triscuit, and Tower City stations all have that offer.
And if you're not planning on going, we've got you covered because you're going to be able to watch the home opener right here on Three. Our pregame coverage starts at 3:00. Basically, Betsy, it's an all-day party. We're going to get you going at 3:00. Betsy and I will be there for What's New live at 5:00. And then first pitch is set at 7:10, and hopefully the Indians will have an exciting walk-off victory against the San Francisco Giants. That would be nice. That's my plan.
Or the Guardians will.
Yeah, I called them the Indians again. Today in the newsroom, the Guardians are playing right now. And in the first inning alone, I called them the Indians three times.
I'm going to put the swear jar at your desk.
Yeah, I should be the keeper of that. It's going to be filled with my single dollar bills by June.
Jay will single-handedly fund the 5:00 party next time.
Somebody was asking me the other day, they said, how many times during the season do you think you're going to do that?
A lot.
I said, 1,000?
Yeah.
I don't know. And here's the deal. When you have a habit that's lifelong, 55 years, and now all of a sudden, it'd be like if you suddenly came in and said, I'm no longer Betsy, I'm Susan. I'm going to call you Betsy, and I'm going to call you Betsy a lot.
I get people that call me all kinds of names.
I promise I won't call you any of those.
Susan would be a really, really nice one, actually.
I won't call you any of those, I promise.
Depends on the day. Today's been a day that I've had a few little looks my way, for sure. Well, let's talk about what's still to come here on What's New.
The Guardians just scored a couple more runs. They're winning in Kansas City today.
Awesome.
Notice I called them the Guardians.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. We'll come back around to that coming up. But man, this is a really cool thing. A huge retailer is offering some major benefits. We're going to tell you how much they are paying and who would qualify.
And band of basketball brothers, I love this story. We have interesting details about how members of the 2016 Cavaliers championship team get along almost six years later. It's pretty fascinating.
That's cool. All right, Matt, as I mentioned, a lot of people have been kind of giving me some dirty looks today. We had some thunderstorms move through.
Yeah, we certainly did. That's why I have tinted windows in my car, Betsy. Can't even tell what's going on inside there. But yeah, we've had some heavy rain across the area as well. Some areas approaching over an inch of rainfall. Storms are outbound, that's the good news. But we have more in the forecast with a widespread severe weather outbreak expected across a good portion of the U.S. this week. We'll talk about that, but for this evening, leftover rain and rumbles, not a good evening to be out on the patio. We'll talk forecasts next.
Welcome back to What's New. Walmart is looking inward to hire more truck drivers. One of the things we've heard over the last couple of years, big shortage of truck drivers. The retail giant is planning to launch a new training program, Betsy, for interested employees who already work in the company in either distribution or fulfillment centers to sort of bring them over to their truck driving team. Makes sense.
Makes perfect sense, actually. And the 12-week program will be taught by a team of established company drivers. The Arkansas-based company said it is also raising salaries for its 12,000 truck drivers, a new starting range of $95,000 to $110,000. Now, that's up from an average opening salary or beginning salary of $87,500, and that is just in the first year. The company hopes the new program will ease some supply chain backups across the country. They are some of the most important people in our workforce.
Yeah, they are.
Truck drivers.
Especially now.
Yes.
One of the things that our What's New regular viewers will know, that Betsy, once upon a time, had dreams of being a truck driver. Her CB handle was Motor Mouth, and she was big in the truck world. She really wanted to do this.
I just wanted to drive.
And then was it last year?
Yeah.
You went out to one of the truck driving schools, and you actually drove one of those big 18-wheel rigs.
Tri-C hooked me up. They have a truck driving school, and a lot of companies are actually paying for the education.
Why not?
So if you're interested in changing careers or you're interested in driving a truck, you can sign on with a trucking company, and oftentimes, they will pay for you to get your license and they'll take you through the whole program.
That's awesome, yeah. They're very important. They're the backbone of the country, really. I mean, think of something that you buy that wasn't delivered in a truck.
Yeah.
And now more than ever are they really being prioritized, and that's good starting money.
That is phenomenal starting money.
I mean, you get to see the country and...
And there's a little skill that's involved.
There's a lot of skill that's involved.
If you can't parallel park your car, truck driving, it may not be for you.
Yeah, you may want to rethink that.
There's a few little details you're going to have to work your way through. Speaking of details and working our way through, boy, Matt, we have an incredible severe weather setup that is going on out to the central part of the country at this hour. It's just beginning.
Wow, okay. Is that going to make it here, or is Matt going to tell us that?
Matt's going to have more on that.
I don't want to steal the headlines. Okay, Matt, your weather word today, air horn.
Beep beep. I got it, actually.
Now, if you can come up with an air horn sound effect and you want to use that, we will accept that.
All right, yeah, maybe I'll do both. Who knows where this old brain is going to take us here. Okay. But yeah, as Betsy mentioned, obviously, in the plains states, we were highlighting this last week, a multiple-day severe weather event that'll get going. We could have some gusty storms out of this. We'll fine-tune the timeline on this, but the bulk of this is going to be west of us. That's some good news. We had some rumbles out there today, good old springtime thunderstorms, good downpours as well. You could see most of it outbound now. This is along a frontal boundary that's sagging down to the south through the area. In terms of rainfall, some of those yellow dots you see on there today, those are areas that are over an inch. So we've got a general quarter of an inch, up to an inch of rain that's falling today. Some of you dealing with some pretty decent puddles out there. Most of it outbound, as I mentioned. Heaviest still in Ashtabula County, stretching from Jefferson up to the Plymouth area, get down towards Orwell, along Route 6, dealing with some heavier rain. It gets a little bit lighter as you get back into Geoga County. Cleveland, we're saying goodbye to the showers as of now. Ditto that down in the Akron area. This will be heading out within the next 15 minutes or so. Still hanging on to some heavier downpours down to the south. Carrollton just south of you, near north, getting down towards areas just outside the viewing area, dealing with some heavy rain. Again, that's outbound. But we're not done yet. Back toward the south and the west, you can see we've got thunderstorms developing. Tennessee back towards Arkansas. That's where severe weather will be tonight. We'll likely get some showers off of this, so we're going to hold on to the shower chances overnight tonight. But then we clear out, should have a beautiful day tomorrow. But this system diving into the west, this is going to be a doozy of a system across the central plains that will bring that severe weather. Still waiting on the energy, which is just now in California. So in terms of severe weather, here's where it's expected tonight, tomorrow, as that system involves itself with some Gulf of Mexico moisture and some cold air coming in back and behind it, expecting severe weather to erupt well to our west. And then Wednesday, that's when we have to watch. We'll have severe weather ongoing towards our west. We get kind of the leftovers of that Wednesday night and Thursday morning. So the timing not real good to support severe weather locally. And thankfully, we hold on to the showers tonight. We'll start to clear things out. National Zymoan Hour by our forecast. You can see how the rain just kind of sticks in here off of those storms tonight. Tomorrow morning, like nothing happened, we'll likely have clear skies throughout the majority of the day tomorrow. Beautiful day. I can't imagine a better day to go outside and blow the air horn than tomorrow afternoon. It should be just gorgeous. The sound effect, I guess, would be, something like that. Yeah, that's the rapper. That's the head of the rap songs. Never mind. Anyway, we'll be up near 60 tomorrow. Keep in mind, it is going to be cooler lakeside, so we're going to hold in the 50s lakeside tomorrow. Beautiful everywhere else, though. Sunshine, mid 60s for most of us, just gorgeous tomorrow. Get outside and enjoy it. In terms of the system this week, we'll take a better look at this next half hour. But as this low-pressure approaches, we'll see storms erupt in the plains. How does that impact us? We'll talk about that coming up in our next half hour. Forecasts, Union Home Mortgage seven-day forecast. Hey, we clear it all out of here for the Guardians' home opener on Friday. How about that? Weekend for Easter right now, maybe dodging a couple showers. Otherwise, we're dry. Should be a nice weekend. Betsy?
Awesome stuff. Thanks so much, Matt. Next on What's New, if at first you don't succeed, well, try again 20 years later. That's right, Bennifer has marital plans yet again. Kira has all the entertainment headlines next in Pop Break.
Then our old friend Goose, I'm sure you remember him, is back on What's New. We're going to show you his latest viral video. That's coming up in our Worth the Watch when What's New comes right back.
You're both talking at the same time. Hey, I do have both of you, and hello, Matt, I am talking.
All right, you know the music. Time for our daily pop break, and time to say hello to Kiara Cotton. Happy Monday, Ki.
Happy Monday, Ki. So what do you have for us today?
Hey, Jay and Betsy, happy Monday. We've got a lot going on, including some breaking news. But up first, JoJo Siwa is clearing things up for fans. When the Nickelodeon Kids Choice Awards went down Saturday night and Siwa wasn't in attendance, folks had some questions. The 18-year-old singer and dancer took to social media to explain. In a video posted to Instagram, she says that it wasn't her choice not to attend.
And the answer is very simple. I wasn't invited. I'm not sure why, but I just didn't get an invite.
And this isn't the first time that JoJo and Nickelodeon have bumped heads. They, back in September, the Dancing With The Stars runner-up called out the network for not allowing her to perform certain songs on tour. And some bonds just can't be broken. One of those is that between the 2016 Cleveland Cavaliers championship team. In a recent interview, Kevin Love revealed that the team still has a group text. He said that himself and team alums, including Kyrie Irving, Tristan Thompson, Amon Shumpert, and even LeBron James, still talk every day, and that it's nothing but brotherly love. And just in case you forgot, the 2016 win was the first championship in Cavaliers franchise history. And speaking of bonds that can't be broken, Bennifer is back. Jennifer Lopez and Ben Affleck are engaged again. After nearly two decades apart, the couple rekindled their romance in late 2021. The 52-year-old singer and actress announced a news on her Instagram with an emotional video, sending fans to her website for the full story. Affleck popped the question with a green engagement ring. This will be the fourth marriage for Jennifer Lopez and the second for Affleck. And here's the breaking news, Jay and Betsy. Last but certainly not least, congratulations are in order for singer Britney Spears. The 40-year-old announced today that she's expecting with husband Sam. I'm sorry.
Oh, whoa. I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot about that coming up on Instagram.
Yeah, congratulations. Very, very exciting news.
There's a lot going on in the world of entertainment.
Yes, there is. Déjà vu on Bennifer, too, huh?
Here we go again.
All righty.
That ring, though.
Yeah, got a bling there. All right, the star of today's Worth the Watch is a familiar face. Our regular viewers will remember that this is Goose the Golden Retriever. Got his own TikTok page. He's got very interesting reactions to certain foods, and today, it's the egg that's got him jumping all over. And you knew it was going to happen, Bets, because the egg is moving, and so is he.
Oh, heck.
And uh-oh, we've got a break. Now, I thought this was going to end by him just slurping up that egg yolk, which would have made me almost vomit. So I was watching very closely, ready to put my phone down at any second, but he didn't.
No.
If he did, they didn't include it in this video. But I thought this was good.
His reactions are just so adorable. He just doesn't know quite what to do. And of course, he doesn't realize how big he is.
Of course. And when he just barely taps it and it breaks, he's looking at it like, wait, what just happened to this thing? It's transformed into yellow goo. I love Goose, though.
He looks up, and right at the... He looks up like, what happened?
Yeah, I know. What is this, mom? What are you giving me here?
So cute.
Yeah, it's adorable.
We have puppies coming up in a little bit.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we do. Three beautiful puppies are going to be on the What's New set. We're just a little excited about that. All right, coming up in the next half hour of What's New, travel nightmares continuing over this weekend. We're going to tell you why and where the biggest issues occurred.
And then the bizarre beach warnings that spring breakers need to be aware of. We're going to tell you what the danger is, why it's happening at some U.S. beaches.
I got to tell you, Bets, this has me super freaked out.
Yikes.
Super freaked out.
Oh, stop.
And Betsy talked about him a second ago.
There they are.
There they are. Today is National Pet Day. We've got some cute little fur babies in studio that just might make the perfect companion for you.
You are very...
Unless I get to them first.
Sweepy.
Oh, my goodness.
Little baby.
And it's time for your top three headlines now at the bottom of the hour. First, Ohio State football coach Ryan Day talked about his former beloved player, Dwayne Haskins, earlier today. According to Florida Highway Patrol, Haskins was attempting to cross the westbound lanes of I-595 in South Florida on foot early Saturday morning when a dump truck struck and killed him. He was pronounced dead at the scene. It's still unclear why Haskins was walking across the highway today. Day said many of the OSU players are still hurting.
It's hard to wrap your mind around something like this, especially...
It's hard to wrap your mind around something like this, especially when it just happened so tragically to a young person, especially somebody who had such a big heart.
While playing for Ohio State, Haskins led the team to a 13-and-1 record back in 2018, including the Big Ten Championship. Haskins was reportedly in Florida training with his current Steeler teammates.
To date, one of the suspects connected to Bluffton Police Officer Dominic Francis's death was in court. 19-year-old Dante Tate requested his preliminary hearing be continued to a later date so he could get a defense counsel appointed. The Medina County judge granted the continuance, and the new hearing will be Monday, April 18th. Tate was arrested in Elyria, where an hours-long multi-county pursuit came to an end. He's charged with fleeing and eluding, along with receiving stolen property.
And today, the Cleveland Guardians announced that its home opener, scheduled for Friday against the San Francisco Giants, is now officially sold out. However, fans still looking to get in on the action can buy standing-room-only tickets. And if you decide to watch at home, well, you can do that right here on Three News. Our game day special begins at 3 o'clock Friday afternoon, and we'll take you right up to first pitch at 7:10, including the game.
Have we ever had a nighttime opener?
No, not in my life, not in my memory. I can never remember it happening this way. It's always a day game. It's festive. It's kind of got a parade feel to it. So Friday's going to have a really interesting feeling downtown, A, because it's Friday, and B, because it's a night game. So fans will have plenty of time to pregame and enjoy a pop or two before they go into Progressive Field. It's going to be a big, big time. And I'm looking over at the monitor right now, and your Cleveland Guardians are on their way to being 2-2. You remember they lost Friday and Saturday to open the season last week. They scored one run in the loss Friday. They did not score at all on Saturday.
Didn't look good.
Then they put 17 on the board yesterday, and they're currently winning 10 to 5 going to the bottom of the ninth. So the bats have finally arrived. They'll be back to 500 if they hold on and win this game, and hopefully they'll come home on Friday with a winning record.
So they have to make a pit stop in Cincinnati for a couple days before they come on up I-71, get here on Friday.
Bring them home.
A lot to talk about over the next few days as far as the game and all the preps for that. Well, thanks so much for staying with us now at 5:30 here on What's New on this Monday afternoon.
Yeah, with Betsy Kling, I'm Jay Crawford. Time for our top talkers.
Yes.
This first one's so, I'm grossed out by this.
Oh, this is about spring break travel. So far, it's been a nightmare for a lot of flyers. Over the weekend, hundreds of JetBlue flights at Boston's Logan Airport were canceled or delayed. This after weather, technical problems, and staffing issues left thousands of passengers stranded around the country. Now, the airline says it's hired 3,000 new crew members, but it still isn't fully staffed. It's planning to make schedule adjustments and is expected to continue to cancel flights in advance wherever they can. The airline also said it announced plans to trim its summer schedule to avoid more problems. Nothing worse than, you know, getting to the airport, everything's great, and then you find out, ooh, now we have a problem.
Come back same time tomorrow.
Maybe. Sometimes it's, it's just canceled, you're out.
Yeah. Now, the one thing in there that really has me worried is your last line in there. They plan to trim back their summer schedule.
So if you have, if you already bought your tickets for the rest of the summer.
Yeah, you could be in trouble if those flights get scrubbed. Now, and also, fewer flights, higher prices.
Right.
So that's coming, too.
Yeah, they'll try and, I'm sure, work with you ahead of time to get you rescheduled if you're on a flight that they're anticipating canceling. But sometimes they don't do that till the last minute.
Yeah. Okay, if you're heading to the beach for spring break, we have a man-a-warning for you. This is the story that really grosses me out. So Portuguese man-o-wars are washing up on the beach in the U.S. because of these strong shifting wind patterns. The warnings have been issued for several beaches in Florida and as far north as South Carolina. This is the part that's really gross. Their tentacles dangle as long as 165 feet below the surface, and they are loaded, Betsy, with toxins that will sting you.
Yes.
Even after they're dead and wash ashore, you don't want to come into contact with these things. That's out of a horror movie right there. That is gross. A college student in Florida said she recently was swimming and felt a pinch on her chest just minutes after getting into the water.
That is like.
I had honestly never felt a pain like that before, and I was trying not to be dramatic because I was like, it's just a jellyfish. But when my dad put me in the car and we went, we decided to go to the hospital, it's because the pain was like so bad, I couldn't even like breathe or talk for a while.
I don't know the science behind it. You may know more about this. I don't know much about it, but I do know that the toxins that those things are loaded with, if you are allergic to them, it can be deadly.
That's, they're bad.
I had, I was once at a beach in a much earlier stage of my life where there was dead washed-up jellyfish, and a buddy of mine decided he was going to kick it.
No.
Yeah, bad idea.
No.
It was dead, and he didn't think it could do him any harm. And, you know, they're kind of, you know, they look like, you know, they're harmless. Look like a sponge laying there. Well, as soon as he kicked it, all the fluid inside of it splattered everywhere. And he looked like he had been dipped in acid. Red dots all over his chest.
Oh, no.
His legs, and he was in excruciating pain. It was horrible.
Well, I don't know if it works for man-o-war, but jellyfish stings, moms know, white vinegar is your friend.
I've heard that before.
Dumping on.
It neutralizes whatever kind of toxins that are in those things. The part that gets me is the 165-foot-long tentacles.
Yeah, it's like those iceberg pictures. You see just a little tippy-tippy iceberg at the top, and there's like so much at the bottom.
Yeah, that's it. Someone's going to make a horror movie about these things soon.
Yeah, well, you don't want one as a pet. Even though today is National Pet Day, and we have some adorable pets that might just become your new best friends.
And on this Money Monday, we finally have relief at the pumps. Not much, but it's enough to pass along to you, and we're excited about it. That's when What's New comes right back. But first, Matt's back. He's got today's weather in a jiffy. What do you have for us today, Matt?
Well, we all knew it was going to be warmer this week, right? So we're all like, all right, today's the first day it's going to be warmer. And maybe this is how we're thinking now, like, it's going to rain the whole time? We've got storms every day? This isn't that great. It will be great. Tomorrow's a great-looking day, and then we deal with some storm chances. We'll take you through that forecast. Don't second-guess it after this.
All right, Matt, it's 5:40 now. We have been somewhat not really actually kind of maybe patiently waiting for the cool air to get out of here and to get into this warmer air that you keeps telling us is coming. So the big question is, come on.
Oh, it's here already. You feel the 55-degree air? Oh, it's so nice here.
Oh, refreshing.
We underachieved today for sure. Tomorrow, we kind of bounce back. Putting the calendar together on the month so far, areas in blue are days that you see in blue. Those are days below average. And red was our little spike we had last week with that above-average reading that lasted oh-so briefly. In terms of numbers, though, our average highs, this is just high temperatures, we're averaging 48 degrees. That's all the better. That is about seven degrees below average. Our warmest day this month, 63 degrees. The coldest day, 40. We've had a lot of those, right? Why do I say that? Because the tide is turning, my friends. Starting to turn today. Tomorrow, we're expecting 60s. It will be cooler lakeside. Look at the spike on Wednesday. Then the front goes by, and it's still not bad. It's still at or where we are right now. So we've got a very spring-like week ahead, and things are going to really start blooming around here. Then we can complain about allergies. Boy, we've had lots of rain today, most of it outbound now. Still coming down good out in Asheshibila County, but we're not done with the rain yet. I think we're done with the storms today. We've lost a lot of that instability that we had earlier. But notice where the thunderstorms are developing down in Tennessee and Arkansas. We'll likely get a lot of the shower activity the rest of the evening, especially the further south you are. So as we go hour by hour, over the evening hours, you see how we're still painting the shower picture in there. This is a frontal boundary, so we settle into high pressure tonight and tomorrow. That will clear things out, and I think it's a picture-perfect day tomorrow. We're going to have a pretty stout lake breeze, but we ought to make it into the 60s. Notice the sunshine up into the 60s, just gorgeous. Again, if you're lakeside within a couple miles of the lake, we'll likely hold in the 50s tomorrow. Either way, it's going to be beautiful tomorrow. This system's outbound. We settle into dry weather, at least temporarily. There's a big trough coming into the western U.S. with lots of energy with that. You could see it there on the water vapor. As that comes out in the plain states, they're going to be dealing with severe weather tonight as this boundary settles south. But as that comes out in the plain states tomorrow, will likely trigger severe weather in pretty widespread in the Missouri Valley and the central and southern plain states. That expands eastward on Wednesday. We are included in, you know, slight risk, especially as you get towards the west. We'll have to keep an eye on this. It doesn't look like a slam dunk severe event for us locally, but it's something we're going to have to keep an eye on in terms of the timing of that front because the timing is everything. So how does this evolve? Your national design, our big-picture look, big area, low pressure. This is going to produce a snowstorm on the northern side, blizzard conditions likely in the Dakotas. You could see Tuesday night, we're dealing with severe weather. Iowa, another chunk there down towards Arkansas. All that develops eastward as we get into our Wednesday. Will likely have rain and rumbles throughout the day. Here's your severe weather. We'll keep an eye on the Wednesday night, likely west of us. When does that arrive? Is it Wednesday night, Thursday morning? The timing not really sufficient for big storms locally, but we could see some gusty winds out of it. And again, we'll have to keep an eye on it. Heavy snow off towards the north. We're keeping that away. In terms of rainfall, we are going to be dealing with some heavy rain around here. So we'll have to watch flood concerns. We're okay right now. Our ground soaked up most of it today, but, boy, it's been awful squishy out there. Union Home Mortgage seven-day forecast, temperature fall as that front goes by Thursday. Jay for the Guardians home opener, looking at great. And then for Easter weekends, if you have plans, we're watching a weak system that'll come in Monday. But as of right now, Easter Sunday looks great. Jay?
All right, thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate it. Time now for our weekly Money Monday segment. And finally, drivers are starting to get a little bit of relief at the pump. According to GasBuddy, prices dropped about 10 cents per gallon in last week. The average price of gas here in Cuyahoga County is now $3.95. Akron saw an even bigger decrease. They were down 18 cents per gallon from last week. In Summit County, the price now at $3.89 a gallon. GasBuddy experts think that gas prices may have hit their peaks this year, barring the typical things, you know, like the war in Ukraine, hurricanes, COVID, and the economy.
Your girl, St. Sue, said she got gas for $3.59 a gallon at Sam's Club.
Wow, that is great news.
This is the text messages I get from my mom while we're on the air.
Hey, she's always keeping us up to date.
Alrighty, well, our rugs and carpets, they do take a beating over time, especially after winter. Now we're getting into spring, you want to clean everything up. Well, if it's been a while since you last cleaned a high-traffic area in your home, I'm going to tell you something that will blow your mind. A quick vacuuming likely won't cut all of it. As Consumer Reports explains, a good carpet cleaner can help bring new life back to an old rug. Here's our Carmen Blackwell with more.
Sonia, Fujimori's dog, Midnight, loves lounging on rugs, carpets, and the sofa. But doggy cleanup, well, can be challenging.
He has a pretty sensitive stomach, so he has vomiting episodes from time to time.
To keep carpets looking great, you have to vacuum them weekly. But often in high-traffic areas or a home with kids and pets, that's just not enough. You'll likely need the help of a carpet cleaner. But which one is the best one? Consumer Reports tested 20 machines and found big differences in price and performance. The test is tough, just like the wear and tear on your carpets at home. CR's testers went to work replicating heavy foot traffic by spreading a measured amount of red clay on light carpeting. It's then sprayed with water, and the clay is embedded into the carpet with a 40-pound iron roller and left to dry overnight.
We have the cleaners make eight cleaning passes over the carpet, then eight passes to suck the solution out.
So which carpet cleaners are worthy to work on your carpet? The Hoover Power Dash Pet for about $100 is a best buy. It does a very good job of pulling moisture out of your carpet after cleaning, so there's flush-dry time. Well, what if you have area rugs and want to do some spot cleaning, including fabric upholstery? CR tested two portable cleaners made by Bissell, the Little Green Portable Carpet Cleaner and the Little Green Pro Heat Portable Carpet Cleaner, a similar machine that includes a stairs tool. The machine was compared to two Resolve fabric cleaning sprays. They spot clean stains on stairs, carpeting, and car upholstery, and they also pitted the machines against the spray on carpet samples with eight tough stains.
In the end, both Bissell models did a better job than the Resolve sprays. But keep in mind that in many cases, a clean spot will stand out if you don't clean the entire surface, and these machines made it easier to do that.
If your heart is set on carpeting, one of these cleaners might become your new best friend. Carmen Blackwell, Three News.
No doubt. Well, here's another tip for you. Carpet cleaner manufacturers typically suggest that you vacuum up loose debris before using a carpet cleaner.
Yeah. Captain obvious.
Did you really have to put that in the manual? But I'm pretty sure they probably had to. You don't want to wet down the carpet when it's got all the junk in it, and then it makes it even worse.
Yeah, it does.
It's like not vacuuming before you wipe up the floors, the kitchen floor or whatever.
What's the worst thing in the world you can imagine spilling on carpet?
Dog poo.
Worse.
Or baby poo.
Oil-based paint. And I did that about two weeks ago at home.
Oh.
Yeah, wasn't pretty.
Right in the middle?
I may or may not have used a word that I'm not allowed to use on TV. I may have used a couple words I'm not allowed to use on TV.
Was it like right in the middle of the carpet?
No, it was in the edge by some trim, and I was able to get it up. But oil-based paint, I mean, that's like forever.
Get a little kerosene on that.
That's what I did. I put some paint thinner on it and immediately vacuumed it out with the shop vac. And it worked.
Take your shop vac out.
But yeah, my shop vac is probably shot.
Well, carpet cleaners, as we all know, are essential for new puppy parents, and we are going to be introducing you to these adorable and adaptable little fur babies in just a couple minutes.
They are so cute. They're going to be out here with Betsy and I in a minute.
These three little babies.
And the love meter is going to break for sure. Also, just hatched, it's an exciting time for Avon Lake Elementary School, keeping their eye on a special pair of babies. Quite a treat. You rarely get to see it, and we'll show it to you coming up. Couple words. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Well, if your phone didn't tell you, and it should, but today is National Pet Day, which is a good excuse to show off your adorable fur babies, and we asked for some of you to share pictures, and many of you did. And this picture here, these are cats, Bets. They're Tater and Harley Quinn. I'm not sure which is which.
And this sweet pup is Priscilla, and...
Oh.
Look at that. This little fella is channeling his inner human, very stately gentleman there.
You know what he's doing there? He's watching Betsy on What's New.
Little football, maybe?
That's a great picture.
Well, if you want to give a furry friend a new home, we have some puppies to introduce you to right now. Greg Wiley with Friendship APL and his assistant Shelby this evening, joining us here from Lorraine County. So who are these three little babies?
Well, you are holding the properly-named Alexander, and you have Iggy over here, and this is Izzy. They are all Beagle-Terrier mixes, about eight weeks old, and they'll be available for adoption tomorrow.
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 Beautiful animals, too, all three of them. How much are they? How much do they cost?
It's $250, includes this bang and neutering, initial vaccinations, dew-warming, microchip, all that is included in the cost of the adoption.
And what kind of dogs are these?
Beagle Terriers.
Oh, that's right, you said that, all right.
And we have lots and lots of puppies right now available for adoption, dogs and cats.
I always say, whatever the fee is, if you dollar-cost average that over 10 years, which is a good lifespan for a dog, this is pennies a day, folks, and it is worth every penny of it, because nothing helps a bad day than walking through the door and seeing your animal come running up, tail wagging. They don't have a care in the world. They're just glad that you're home. That's it.
Absolutely. There's nothing more like that unconditional love that comes with a pet. Although, I will tell you, for the pennies a day it costs right now, remember that it does cost a lot of money to take care of a pet.
Sure, and effort, too. It takes time.
And those costs are going up considerably during this time, so people want to be aware when they're making that decision, that this is going to be an important and lifelong commitment.
And we do want to tell everybody, these little babies were fixed today, so that's why they're a little on the chill side. They do perk up a little bit. They are puppies, right?
I know, the first thing I said was all three of them, they're all so docile.
They're still hanging out with the medication at this point.
They were running around earlier. They also get tired, spurts of energy, and then lots of sleeping.
They're babies, they really are. And so let's talk about that, because new pet parents oftentimes don't necessarily understand you're going to be getting up every three hours for the first couple weeks to take them outside and all of that stuff. So what advice would you give to new pet parents?
Absolutely, you got to be patient. Patience is the key. Patience is the key to life, actually, in my mind. Patience in any relationship you have, but particularly with pets, and you want to take that time to understand that they are going to learn, and the learning curve is a little bit higher and longer with puppies. So if you don't have all that time and energy and commitment, perhaps an adult dog is the right one for you. And there's so many adult dogs looking for homes right now in shelters across northeast Ohio.
Yes, and them come trained.
Quickly, folks want to adopt any of these three or other animals, what do they do?
Well, the best thing to do is go and find out our process by visiting our Facebook page at Friendship Animal Protective League or our website at friendshipapl.org.
Awesome, thank you so much for coming.
Shelby, thanks.
Made our day.
We'll be right back.
Hey, mic check. One, two, three, mic check. Laura Casas, mic. Yeah, I got you.
Yes, I do. I have both of you in my ear. Check one, two, three, four, five. This is Brandon talking about city council in Shaker Square.
I do, Al. You got me? You're in OK?
Yes, I do. Check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Yes, I do. I got it on now. You feeling all right? I mean, you got it. Great.
Well, there is an exciting new sight to see at the Bald Eagle Nest in Avon Lake. Two eggs have hatched now at the Redwood Elementary School. The first made his entrance at 7:30 yesterday morning. The second egg hatched this morning at 10:45, and we're just waiting on one more to make its entrance.
That's so, it's really cool that you get a chance to see it. It's very rare, but there it is.
Going to be some busy eagles.
Nature at work, you aren't kidding.
The skies are pretty blue.
Yeah, you aren't kidding.
Certainly.
Well, all right, thank you so much for joining us on this Monday afternoon. We're back tomorrow at 5:00, and we hope to see you then.
Good luck getting home with the dogs.
I know.
You've got some splaining to do.
My wife told me I can't come home unless I have one of those puppies with me.
And you've got a lot of explaining to do. As for us right now, Three News at 6:00 with Jay and Laura begins.
Fleeting Freedom.
This was a man that lost his life because it was taken away from him from greed and deceit.
A man spent decades behind bars for a crime he didn't commit, only to pass away after having his conviction overturned. Tonight, hear from the man who was at his bedside when he died. Saving Shaker Square, the next steps in the plan to rescue the historic shopping area...